...of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is roll call. Holly?
All councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Next up is agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is not.
None?
No.
I will entertain a motion.
With that, Mayor, I'll make the motion. We prove the agenda is presented.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the agenda? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Next up we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I have two cards tonight. First one is Mr. Ron Brink. Mr. Brink, we have a three-minute time limit and I'm sure you're aware that we enforce it. Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here.
Kind of ironic, I want to speak about that timer that is now starting. I think that it's a little bit imitating, distracting, and obnoxious. I don't have a problem with three minutes, but, you know, I go to meetings all over the state. I have for years, a lot of places have a time limit. They may have maybe a little light or something that flashes, but that, that takes away even from the people out here. They're watching that and not listening to what anybody's saying. So I think that's just a comment that I wanted to make about it and that's my feelings and I think that it, we don't want to discourage people from coming up here and having their say, but I think that that does. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. Appreciate your comments. Next up is Mr. Alfred Petros. Thank you for being here, Mr. Petros. And you obviously have some friends with you.
I do. So, thank you for having us, Honorable Mayor Lucero and city councilors. What we're here to talk on is the Tax Help Colorado program on behalf of Adams State University. This is currently the third year that I've worked as a Tax Help Colorado program manager and it'll actually be my last year. So what I wanted to do was introduce the two individuals that will be continuing on that program for at least the Alamosa and greater San Luis Valley area. We have Taylor Crowther, who is a senior accounting, or excuse me, a junior accounting student at Adams State, as well as Angel Rug, who is a junior accounting student at Adams State as well. What I wanted to do was also deliver some numbers to the council that the Tax Help Colorado program has experienced locally. Last year, we were identified to be the best-running tax site that the Peton Foundation, which is the grant that funds the program, has actually funded nationwide. Last year, we were able to refund, or prepare 860 tax returns to Alamosa and San Luis Valley residents. That totaled up to roughly $1.8 million in refunds to those taxpayers. This year, one of our goals is to deliver on nearly 1,000 tax returns, but also to see if we can reach the $2 million benchmark of tax refunds to citizens here in our local area. As meeting yesterday morning, actually, Taylor and I were with the individual who found the Tax Help program in the nation. His name's Fred Gordon, and he delivered some interesting statistics. The money that we refund to our local constituencies is going to roll over roughly four times. So that means that it rejuvenates and is spent within our local communities four times, re-energizing and allowing for economic prosperity here in the San Luis Valley. So just wanted to inform you on a few of the things that we're doing at Adams State, some of the involvement that we're going to have, and also to introduce the individuals that I'm going to be passing the torch down onto. This is a great resource to the San Luis Valley. It'll continue to do well, but as always, we always need to form that partnership with our local community and make sure that it's made possible. Just to outline the dates that will be open this year, we did open this past Saturday. We will be open on Saturdays from 9 until 4:00 p.m. and Monday evenings from 4 until 7:30 p.m. And our hours of operation will remain open until March 16th. So that is the report I have from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfred, and thank you, Taylor and Angel. Appreciate.
Mayor, before that thing goes off, I had some questions for Mr. Alfred. You say from 9 to 4:00 p.m.? Where at, Alfred? Where's this?
So our site is located in the School of Business at Adams State. Now, not many people are really familiar with that exact physical location, so we like to direct people to the intersection of Third and Richardson, and then, of course, the signage is displayed outside of our building there.
And also, everybody qualifies for this, or what's the process there, you know? I've seen, I've seen the stuff on the paper and stuff, but now here's an opportunity for us to ask you, the people who actually do the program, to see.
So we do have an income limitation on the individuals that we serve. That way, we don't remain competitive with other accounting firms or CPAs that are certified to prepare tax returns. So the, the grant, well, the foundation that has granted us the funds to operate has set a $53,000 limitation on, it's AGI, so we have a $53,000 limitation on the returns that we can prepare.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. Alfred, just another question. Is this just at Adams State or is this at Trinidad as well?
We do have, well, it doesn't operate under at the Adams State location, of course, but I am aware that there is one location at TSJC. Now, as far as their hours of operation, I'm not really sure what those are, but I do know that they have definitely returned a lot of money back to the San Luis Valley as well.
Thank you, Alfred. I just wanted to say thank you to you and all the folks at Adams State for doing this. This is a great asset to the, to the people here in the San Luis Valley, especially, I partaked in this program when I was going through college, so I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Jan, and thank you, Counselor Griege.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes. I'm sorry. Okay, no worries. Alfred, Taylor, and Angel, I would like to thank you all for doing an amazing job here in the San Luis Valley by providing the services that you're providing. I truly hope you reach your goal of preparing over 1,000 tax returns and $2 million, because, like you said, that money circulates back into the community four times, and that's one way to continue to stimulate our local economy. So we appreciate the hard work and dedication that you and your team provide to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman.
Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, Alfred. Are there any other restrictions besides income?
A few of the things that the IRS has set before us is that we are not able to prepare returns that have Schedule F, Schedule Es, or Schedule Cs. Now, we do recognize that there are a lot of individuals in the San Luis Valley that are self-employed, so we are able to perform a Schedule C EZ, so Schedule C short form.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfred. We appreciate what you and your team do for the citizens in our community and probably the entire valley.
Thank you, Mayor Lucero.
Does staff have any follow-up on anything? Thank you. Next up, we have a ceremonial item. We have the introduction of a new officer and announced promotions within our police department. Chief Oaks, thank you for being here.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council. It's with great pleasure that I get to be in front of you tonight to announce some promotions and introduce three new officers to you. Typically, I read their bios and everything to you. I've decided to change that up and give them a chance to speak to you and actually introduce themselves to you rather than me speaking for them. As you all know, with Robert Jackson's retirement and election as sheriff, that opened up a captain's position for us. Through a selection process which included outside solicitation, it's with great pleasure that I got, got to promote within and promote Kenny Anderson to our Support Services Commander in the rank of captain. And as a result of that, he moved up from the position of sergeant, and so I got to promote a corporal to a sergeant, and that resulted in Orlando Dorton being promoted to sergeant. And then, from him moving up from corporal, I got to promote an officer to corporal, and that officer's not here tonight because that is Tate Kinchew. And as you all probably already know, Tate is going through or attending K-9 training. He's been selected as our K-9 officer. He should be done with that program within about two to three weeks, and both he and his dog Samantha should be certified, and they will be down in Alamosa working at that point in time. I will schedule him to come in and introduce Samantha to you, and I will also speak about him at that, at that point in time. So he's in the springs training tonight, so he's not able to be here. And then, we have three new officers that were hired, I think around October, August of last year, I believe. They went through a 14-week training program, and they've successfully completed that program and have been assigned as a one, one-man car assignment with the police department. So I'm here to introduce them tonight, too. The first one standing closest to me is Zach Decker, then Matthew Davidson, and Ronnie Hadley. So I'll begin with Kenny Anderson. I'll let him speak and introduce himself to you all, and then we're just work, work our way down the line.
Thank you, Chief. How you doing, guys? Thank you very much for the time tonight. As you are all aware, this is a huge opportunity for myself. You know, I've, I've been with Alamosa now with this department for over 14 years. You know, I was born in Oxnard, California, 1979. I moved here in Alamosa in 1991 with my parents, Laura and Marty Anderson. I've got four trouble-making kids. One is sitting right over there. That's Ashton. He's my youngest son. I've got two daughters, two daughters, Kada and Amara, and my oldest son is Austin. He's 15. I graduated here in the Alamosa area from Alamosa High School. I went to the Trinidad Police Academy in 2000. I was hired here with Alamosa Police Department in 2001. I basically started here when I was 21. I'm 35, almost 36 years old now, so, you know, I've pretty much grown up here with this department. Thank you all for, you know, putting up with me as a very young officer, you know? Now I'm starting to grow up, and I've been given a very huge opportunity here. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't get recognized all that much. I've gone through quite a few different administrations. It's changed, you know? I've gone through administrations that have been kind of nonexistent, and I've gone through administrations that's been hard to work for. And luckily, now I've got administration, Chief Oaks, and Sam Mestes, who's our captain for, for the patrol division. And I'll be quite honest with you guys, I mean, it's, it's amazing to have what we've got now. You know, we've got a great opportunity to, to create this department and, you know, just continue to move forward with it. I mean, a little bit about myself. Been a member of the SWAT team since April of 2001. I was a team leader for the SWAT team for about a year. It's a little different getting used to my new assignment now. When they get a call out, I'm basically looking for intel to provide the new team leader, who is Joey Spangler, who's a sergeant with our department, provide that information and go that way. I am a driving instructor with the police department, an active shooter, rapid deployment, such as your school shootings, things like that. I specialize in trainings for this department along with the San Luis Valley Training Foundation. I trained for other departments that come down to the San Luis Valley. I've been a field training officer for several years with this department, member of the Honor Guard. You know, I don't, I don't know, I've got a piece of paper here, guys, huh? I know you can see me reading. Truthfully, it's an honor. Yeah, I mean, it's a little stressful right now. I'm trying to get used to my new position, but I'm going to do the best job I can for each and every one of you guys in the community. That's my job, so, you know, eventually it's going to flow. It's going to, you know, it's going to work out pretty good. I can just tell you right now, I'm going to give it all, all I got, so thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Captain Anderson. Those bars look good on you.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mayor.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Orlando Dorton. The chief said I was just promoted to sergeant. I grew up here in the Valley. I grew up in Delmore. I graduated from Delmore High School. After high school, I went into the military. I was a medic for six years. I went to the police academy in 2000. Actually, Captain Anderson and I went together, so we've kind of grown up together and done the same things and kind of come along together. After the academy, I was hired here in 2001 also, so I just finished my 14th year here with the PD. Since I've been with the PD, I've been an instructor in I don't know how many different areas. I've done CPR, first aid, less lethal munitions. I'm currently a firearms instructor for the PD and for the training academy here at, for Trinidad. I've been on the SWAT team, an FTO. I've trained several people. That's probably one of my favorite things about doing this is when the new guys come in, is training them and showing them, you know, how we do this, how we do that, and just getting them up to speed to where they're ready to come out and hit the ground running and, and providing all the services that we do for the city and for everybody that's here. I am currently one of only two FBI crisis negotiators for the PD officer, Detective Nowher's actually our other one. I believe there's only four in the Valley, so. I am married. I have my lovely wife in the back, CJ. We have four kids also, and, you know, I just want to thank everybody here, thank my family for the support and the opportunity. I look forward to the new adventures and everything that's going to come our way. We're on a great path right now. We got everybody solid, and I think it's just going to be nothing but good things coming forward, so thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Gordon, right?
Yes, sir.
Sergeant, thank you.
Evening. Chief Oak says I'm Zach Decker. Glad I could be a part of the community and a part of this department. I was born and raised here, so I get to, I got to see how this valley's either progressed and declined in some areas, so I'm glad I can be a part of the department and help the community. I've been married to my wife for five years. She's sitting out there, Kendra. We have two kids, a son and daughter, which keep us pretty busy. I started a career as a firefighter for the sand dunes and was convinced that I should go into law enforcement, so went to a federal academy, came back to the valley and worked for the sand dunes as a park ranger for a total of three years, and decided that I was getting kind of tired of that drive out to the dunes every day, so I wanted to get a job closer to home, where we live in Montevista. So I went through the academy just this past year here in Alamosa and graduated in May. And while in the academy, I worked for Adams State University for about a total of nine months, and then I was given the opportunity to join Alamosa Police Department in September of this year, of last year, sorry. And a little stressful for the training program, but glad I made it through, and I just hope I can be a good asset in addition to the department and the city of Alamosa.
Welcome. Thank you.
Matthew Davidson. I was born and raised in Colorado Springs. Went to the University of Colorado, Colorado Springs, earned my bachelor's degree in sociology and minor in ethnic studies. I graduated in 2005 up there. In 2006, I was lucky enough to get hired by the Cheyenne, Wyoming Police Department and spent the last eight years of my career actually up there. Very fortunate, given a lot of opportunities up there. Was a member of the Honor Guard, field training officer for some time. I was a member of the Cheyenne Police Laramie County Joint SWAT Team, and was an element leader for one of our entry teams up there. And the last part of my tenure up there actually spent as a detective in street crimes for kind of our specialty unit that the chief formed up there. I was lucky enough, I've always wanted to come back to Colorado. I got, still have my family down here, so the, luckily enough, the chief gave me the opportunity to come down here and work for the city of Alamosa. You know, I enjoy it so far. It's a little bit smaller than Cheyenne and Colorado Springs, but it's, it's kind of nice. I'm enjoying the nice, warm winter that we supposedly are not used to having down here. You know, so I, I look forward to, you know, progressing my career down here. I believe I've been given the opportunity to attend Drug Recognition Expert School in June, so I look forward to attending that school and, you know, hopefully continue my career down here with the Valley and the city of Alamosa.
Thank you, Officer Davidson, and welcome to Alamosa.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ronnie Hadley, originally from Tampa Bay, Florida. Through my life, I graduated high school from Dunedin High School, played high school sports, I was part of clubs. I did AmerCor for Clearwater PD, did that for a little bit. Went off to college up in Minnesota. Played college ball there. After that, I, I played semi-pro, played for three different teams. When that was all done, I, I moved out here to Colorado in 2010, just for a change for myself. In the process of doing all that, I pursued my police career, came out here and graduated from Trinidad State with my two-year degree. I got some credits at Adams. While I was here, I volunteered for APD for, I believe, about nine months, so I was part of the volunteer program here, did everything from working with the SWAT team, working in the office writing paper, cleaning the cars, shoveling snow, getting hit with SIM rounds, I mean, you name it. I put in a lot of work to get here. My life wasn't the best, but I made it work. I think I, I came a long way from where I was actually from. I had some great mentors, Chief Oaks, Captain Anderson, Captain Mestes. They, ever since I got here, they've always been by me. I haven't had one incident where they told me to do something, I did the opposite, and they knew the answer and the outcome, so I learned a lot from these guys. Let's see, I went to Arapaho Community College and went there for another police academy. After I was done with that one, I got hired on with Montevista PD, December 2013, worked there for eight months. Luckily, I had a job opportunity to come here, and Chief Oaks hired me on, and I'm very grateful to be here, and I'm going to do the best I can, and yeah.
Very good. Welcome to Alamosa.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
I just have a couple of words to say on top of what they said is, all three, the three new officers are a great addition to our staff. They really are. Since being here, they have all, all excelled. They performed outstanding, and then the three that I got to promote, I have no doubt are going to do the city and the police department an awesome job. They performed for many years already, and I, I'm anxious to look, work with them as command staff or supervisory, so I think we're moving forward and, and we're adding great people, so.
Thank you, Chief. Obviously, we are in good hands with the police department that we have and what, and who you have fielded. I'm sure council has some comments for you. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, thank you to you and welcome to all the new guys, and you guys are awesome. Just keep it up. And I also noticed that on your badges, you have a line going across for a friend of mine, and I'd like to offer my, my sympathies to you all and to the Riggs family on the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gillespie?
Yes. I'm very proud of our police department, very proud of these police officers. They're very professional, well-trained, and have strong leadership. They face stressful situations daily. Today, I'm especially proud of these officers. I am pleased to see we were able to promote from within. It shows we have a succession plan and shows the younger officers that there is a great potential for promotion and rank. Thank you to you all. Charlie Griege and myself were able to attend the ceremony on Saturday, meet some of your family and friends. Very nice. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Man, Greg said just about everything. Our, for the new guys, our training that Captain Oaks gives us, or Chief Oaks gives us, gives you guys, the opportunity to attend is terrific. These guys have worked up, and when they interview, they do extremely well because of the training provided, and even before Chief Oaks, that training was put in place, but you've pushed it even further, and I appreciate that. Welcome aboard, new guys. I better look at this, because I don't want to call you sergeant when you're captain. Captain Anderson, you're going to do just fine. I was extremely excited when I read the email that you were the one chosen. You're going to do great. And Sergeant Dorton, I was extremely excited to see that you were promoted. Thank you, guys, for serving us.
Counselor Griege?
Well, I've had an opportunity to see a lot of different officers come and go. I've been here, like I said, over 30 years, and to see such, a lot of young people interested in our community and wanted to come here, and I, I want to echo what Counselor Johnson said about Mr. Anderson. I've seen Mr. Anderson grow in this department, and, and he will definitely do a good job as a captain. Eventually, he might even take Duane's position when, when Duane decides to, to hang it up. But it is, it is great to see a lot of young, young officers that are willing to serve this community. This is a good community, and one thing I, I want to kind of emphasize, because when you, you guys come in, don't, don't, don't be scared to say hi to the people, you know? What we want to do is we want to have the people believe in our police officers. When an officer approaches them, the safetiness should come to them, not, not something that they're going to get arrested. So I think it's so important, and I, and I've tried, I've talked to other chiefs in the past, and I've said, hey, say hi to the people, you know? There's times I'll go by and I'll wave at an officer, and, and if he doesn't wave back, he must be doing something else, and I thought, well, you gotta be looking out at what's going on, so I think, you know, just a little thing for the new guys, you know, don't be scared to, you know? The more you wave, the more you get acquainted with the community, I think the better you're off we're going to be whenever some incident happens. So welcome to the promoted people and, and the new officers. Welcome to our community.
Counselor Stefano?
I'll reiterate that. Welcome, new guys. Welcome to Alamosa. It's a wonderful city. I've seen Mr. Mestes grow. He's a better police officer than he's a bowler, but, than Kenny. I've seen Kenny grow, and I think our chief is a good acquisition to our city, and you got a, looks like you got a bunch of great guys behind you, so Kenny, congratulations, Mr. Gordon. It's a wonderful place, and we thank you for your service.
Chief, there's not much more I can say. I think it's been said, but, you know, kudos to you, your department. When Charlie said, I've seen officers come and go, I see them come and go every day, because I'm generally on the road every day, and so I see them coming and going. Generally, wave at all of them, for the most part. You probably know me and my little green wreck pickup, but anyway, yeah, Charlie's got a point when he says getting involved in the community is so important and being friendly if you're a friendly police officer. That changes a whole attitude about how people view you, and I think each and every one of you has that attribute in your heart, and even though it's a tough job, there are really neat- it's a tough job, there are really neat people in our community. So thank you very much, Chief, and congratulations to all of you gentlemen.
Thank you for your time.
I have a comment.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes, Chief, sorry about that. I want to say congratulations to those who were promoted. I want to say welcome to those who are new, and I want to say thank you to all of you for putting your life on the line for our community every day. I just want you to know that we greatly appreciate the service that you provide to our community, and also to the spouses who allow your husbands to participate in our police force. We thank you. My mom was a Houston police officer, and I know the stress and the strain that it caused on a marriage and a relationship. So hang in there with these guys. They're, they're going to come home and they're going to continue to be good for our community as well for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have the approval of minutes of our regular meeting, January twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, and a two thousand and fourteen audit engagement letter with Walt Smith and Bateman and Association. Are there any questions or comments on Consent Calendar A?
I had some questions.
Counselor Grego?
What I like to do is, I like to pull Item C-7B and put it under, right above Public Works Regular Business. I had some comments and some questions on the engagement letter, if that's possible, Mayor.
Okay.
Is that a need, is, do we need a motion to do that, Eric?
No, you don't. Any, any counsel can pull that off.
Okay.
Okay. Well, with that, Consent Calendar A will only include the approval of minutes of the regular meeting for January twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen.
I motion we approve Consent Calendar A as amended.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on Consent Calendar A? None? Start voting, please.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular business, business brought forward by city staff. Tonight, we'll start with the Public Works, the first reading on Ordinance Three dash two thousand and fifteen, Amending Off-Street Parking Requirements for Eating and Drinking Establishments Use and Other Auditorium Meeting Rooms Use.
Mayor, I think when Charlie removed the item, he wanted that to be addressed next, the Walt Smith and Bateman.
I wanted to kind of throw it out top, Mayor, before you start your regular agenda.
That's fine. Why don't we go ahead and do that? We'll just go ahead and talk about that, Charlie.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled this off, off the agenda, I wanted to make some remarks and had some questions on some of the, on some of the sections of the letter itself. With no, how do I say this? With no committed, Walt Smith and Bateman does a great job for us, and they've had, for a lot of years, done a great job. I know that from past city managers, and the way this is structured, we're supposed to review this every five years and maybe go with a different person as far as an auditor. But the way Walt Smith and Bateman does it is, they, they rotate the people, so we're constantly seeing different eyes on the audit, which is great, you know? So I wanted to make that point. The next point I wanted to make is, in the letter itself, and in the communication, it talks about that this, the cost of it will not exceed forty-eight thousand dollars, and that's in the background on it. Well, if you read the, the letter itself, in the fees and the other, there's a section that talks about fees and all that, they're talking about forty-nine thousand five hundred. So I don't know if that needs to be corrected.
I may have transferred it over improperly from last year's communication, so that could be a copy and paste error on my.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to point that out, because they're saying that they're, they want forty-nine five hundred on it.
And I think that is in the event that we don't have to have a single audit, which we are not required to have a single audit.
Right. Yeah, I did see that. Another, another section that it talked about was a third party, if Walt Smith needs to show this to a third party. And I don't know if that's ever happened, Amanda, in this process.
I haven't seen it since I've been here, and that normally would be something, Walt Smith and Bateman also has requirements that they have to be audited, and they have a peer review. And so that may be some of what is being, it's pretty much uniform language that comes across on those engagement letters.
Well, in reading that, in this letter, when it says, occasionally, we will show this to a third party, that kind of, I kind of thought, you know, what's?
And we can look at prior year letters, and they're pretty much uniform year to year. There are certain requirements that they have in putting those engagement letters out, and that is a requirement, as each section of those have requirements that Walt Smith and Bateman also has to have in their, their information to council and when they sign those agreement letters.
Do we have an amount of what we paid last year for this prior audit?
Forty-eight thousand is what we paid.
Okay.
Yes.
And like you said earlier, that since we're going to do, we don't have to do a single audit, it should be a little cheaper than that.
Well, it would have, I want to say that it would have been fifty-five thousand had we had to do the single audit, but because we don't, then it scales it down to the forty-nine five. One thing that I want to mention as well is, we, as staff and council, had decided that we would go through and we would put this out for RFP every few years. That will come up next year. So we've gone through the cycle, even though they do change their auditors, they change their senior auditors, we still have that to go through, that we do have to put it out for an RFP, and we do that every five years. That will be done this coming year. So around September time period, we will send out another RFP, see if there's other interested parties that are willing to bid on our audit, and then take the process from there.
And is, is that a requirement through our charter?
It's not a requirement completely through our charter. The fact that the dollar amount is not necessarily the audit, but the dollar amount that is associated, we can go through and do that RFP process.
And the reason I point out the, the amount is, I see the hard work that your department does, you know, and it should, it should have some kind of weight, you know? And every year, we go through this, the audit process, and, you know, once in a while, we'll find something here and there. But if there's not finding problems, and we're still getting charged the same or more, I don't, kind of sends up a flag and says, well, what's going on here?
Their, their process actually is very timely. They put a lot of work into it, and at any given time, they can have eight to ten auditors working on our audit at once. So we may only see the senior auditor and a couple of them here, but at the same time, they have a large staff working on our audit, trying to push it through. So they, they do have a lot of time and effort into it as well.
And again, I want to emphasize, they do a great job. I'm not, that's not my comments. But when I read this, you know, and I saw the different amounts, you know, I don't want them to come back and charge us forty-nine five, and we're saying, we're telling, you're telling council that we've agreed on forty-eight.
And I did double check. It should probably be forty-nine five. It was just probably a pasting error. So it's good to clarify that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? I, I know, Amanda, that periodically, when we go up to CML, we're, we're addressed by different companies, specifically Ruben Brown, and I visited with our city manager, but when the RFP goes out, they hardly ever respond. So it's one of those things where I know it's a competitive market, and I'm sure you and staff, our city manager, everybody is looking out for the last time that we have to spend on an audit. And like Counselor Grego says, when we keep our business local, and Counsel Coleman as well, we're doing a great service for our community. So as long as they keep doing a great job for us, there's no reason for us to really look anywhere else. However, every once in a while, it doesn't hurt just to kind of look out there and see what might be happening with other firms. Thank you very much for that, Amanda.
And with, with that, Mayor, if there's no other questions, I'll, did you have a question?
No.
I'll make the motion that we approve the two thousand and fourteen audit agreement letter with Walt Smith and Bateman Associates.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the two thousand and fourteen audit engagement letter with Walt Smith and Bateman?
Is there a need to put the dollar amount on the motion?
There's no need to, but since there was that discrepancy between the communication and the actual letter, that's probably a good idea. Yeah. So approve the engagement letter for a cost not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Counselor Grego, would you like to amend your motion to include the forty-eight thousand?
Well, I thought the agreement was that we weren't going to go past forty-eight.
I, I think that was a pasting error, so if we could have it reflect the amount that's in the engagement letter, which is forty-nine thousand five hundred.
But the, the communication talks about that councils had discussion on, in the past about not going over a certain amount of money.
It's certainly up to council, but the forty-eight thousand was a mistake by staff.
And I looked at it, maybe that the forty-nine five was a mistake. So I don't know. What, you know, council has discussed this, and we wanted to stay within forty-eight. Like you said, it has to go back to council and have council say.
I've got a motion and a second on the floor.
They want me to amend the motion to add the?
Shall we vote on that and see if it passes, or?
And this, and in regards to council discussion, this would be the time for council to discuss after you vote, if you want forty-eight or if you want forty-nine five.
I think Counselor Grego has made a motion to not exceed forty-eight thousand dollars. Am I correct, Counsel Grego?
Correct.
And there was a second. Who was the second? Was there a second? There was no second. Counselor Stefano? So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If, if, Counselor V. Hill?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Councilman Grego, I think the, the letter states forty-nine five, the copy and paste error is from last year for forty-eight. So I think we, it would be smart on us to go with the forty-nine five.
And Mr. V. Hill, I, I agree with you, but if discussion in the past was that what amount we set for audit and not to exceed it, and then all of a sudden, it, a cover letter comes with forty-nine five, I think that discussion needs to be brought back to council, so council can say, okay, yeah, let's go ahead and pay it, or let's visit with, with the, the accountants and see why it's that much, because from sitting on other boards where they're, what they've done worked for us, we've had questions and we've sent it back, and usually, sometimes we get that reduction. And, and we're dealing with the taxpayers' money here, and like I emphasized, that Amanda does a great job, you know, her staff does a great job. They present, sure, there was a lot of auditors that come here, and they work hard also, and I said, like I said, they do a great job. But by the same token, if we're saying something, forty-eight, then all of a sudden, we get a cover letter that says forty-nine five without a discussion of, of council on that, increasing that forty-eight to forty-nine, then, you know? And I understand if, if this goes through or doesn't pass, I think it needs to, maybe before the engagement letter is signed, maybe they should have this discussion, and maybe even have a discussion with, with the Walt Smith and Bateman. So... But as the mayor said, there's a motion and a second, and we can go through it and?
Well, I think there's a little more discussion on that.
Okay.
I think what we're looking at is a three percent increase, which is exactly about what the CPI is. So that only makes sense from year to year that it goes up three percent. I have no problem with that.
Counselor Johnson?
My understanding is, we did an RFP four years ago, and Walt Smith and Bateman, at that time, they didn't put a specific figure for the next five years. There were small increases, and the forty-eight was from last year, and as Greg said, there's a small increase. And if we bid that over a five-year period, my understanding when we approved that was that there would be some small increases through the process as part of the RFP. So I believe this is within the RFP, the forty-nine five that we approved when we originally talked about it. And I don't think this is something that we want to hammer out yearly, send out RFPs yearly. I think it's something that we want to do, you know, in the five-year thing. And I think, as Greg said, that this fits, and I'm good with the forty-nine five the way it sits. I remember the last time we sent out, sent out the RFPs, if I remember correctly, we were around seventy-two was the next lowest bidder. It was, there was a significant amount between Walt Smith and Bateman and the next lowest bidder. So I'm real comfortable with these figures.
Well, Counselor?
And then just as an additional piece of information, so you have everything in front of you, I checked with Amanda, the budget item is currently at fifty-five thousand. So it's, it is within the budget.
And she did say that if this, if this other single audit would have come into play, then the fifty-five would have probably been the amount that we would have to pay. But to address, Counselor Johnson, I'm trying to remember the, the conversation back then in the RFP, and I, I don't recall that we talked about a percentage increase annually, you know? And if that's the case, well, you are, you're right, that it's a three percent. But by the same token, I, I still, I think there's, needs to be some discussion, because if we're doing all this work and we continue growing, they keep uncharging us. And I've been here when audits were paid, when we were in trouble with our, with our finance departments. And I could see, I could justify the amounts, but today, I see the department we have and the work they do, I, I can't, you know, personally, I can't justify a forty-nine five increase, you know? And I think if, if we were to sit down and, and visit with Walt Smith and Bateman, I'm sure that they would probably look at it and come in with some other determination.
I've got a motion and a second on the floor for an engagement letter with Walt Smith and Bateman not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
No, no.
I think it's forty-eight.
Forty-eight, I'm sorry. Forty-eight thousand dollars. Please start voting now. The motion fails, I believe. Let me, I'm sorry. Holly?
Can you turn your screen to? The motion failed with Councilors Gillespie, V. Hill, Johnson, and Coleman casting the no votes. It failed three to four.
Counsel, what is your, what are your wishes now? Mr. May?
Excuse me, Counsel. Were you going to make a motion?
Yeah.
Before you make, I don't mean to interrupt you. I think, I think, is there a deadline on this letter that we have to, that we have to sign this tonight, where we can have some conversation with Mr., with the, with the associate, with Walt Smith and Bateman?
We can always continue discussions. I can check with Amanda if it has to be tonight. I think we want to make sure we get in their queue and get scheduled for the audit to be handled in a timely manner. Whatever direction council wants to provide, if there's enough for a vote to pass it at forty-nine five, or if council wants to give a direction to have discussions, that would be up to the city council.
Counselor Johnson?
If there's no other discussion, I move that we authorize staff to sign an engagement letter and contract with Walt Smith and Bateman and Associates to perform the city's required annual audit in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the engagement letter with Walt Smith and Bateman?
Yes, Mayor. I agree with Counselor Grego. I think we should at least try and talk with an associate at Walt Smith and Bateman about this figure.
I've got a motion and a second on the floor. Please start voting.
The motion passed four to three.
Thank you, counsel. Obviously, a very contentious issue.
Mayor, one more comment before we move on. I don't think it would hurt to visit with these people and let them know that there was concern about the price. with these people and, and let them know that there was concern about the price, the amount, Heather, or even Amanda, and, you know, if you don't say anything, you know, if we're here just to stamp a bill and, and not question the bills, I, I think we're doing something wrong.
Councilor Johnson?
Where, where I agree with you, Charlie, I think that we need to be, this isn't the time to do that. I think the time to do that is when we decide to get into a five-year, five-year cycle to do RFPs. I don't think you come in at the end of the cycle and question because we approved that five years ago when we accepted their RFP, and that discussion happened back then or should have. I don't mind having the discussion somewhat with them, but I don't really think it's fair that we award an RFP. We award them off of a bid and then go back at the end, the last year before the next RFP, and try to renegotiate the contract with them, if, in fact, my memory is correct, that there, there was allowances in the RFP for sliding increases through the years.
And, and I don't, you keep on talking about an RFP. I, I never, I, I haven't seen one. I, I think there's, there's been a continuance where we, we, we haven't had a qualified CPA out there that can audit us, so what we've done in the past is, we'll say, okay, let's, let's let them go ahead and do it again because of the different people that, that they rotate within their organization to have different eyes on the audit itself. So, if you really look at the, the whole extent of it, these people have been doing time after time after time.
I know they have.
So, there, there really isn't a five-year deal, even though we've discussed, city managers have discussed that it's, it's only right that every five years, we have a different auditor look at our books.
And I think you're misunderstanding what I'm saying, Charlie.
Okay.
Every five years, we put it out to bid, to bid this contract.
Oh, I don't know. We haven't...
And I specifically remember that happening.
Amanda, can you, I don't think we've had every five years.
Gentlemen, I, I, I think we've kind of beat this horse to death. I, we have...
Can I, can I ask Amanda if we put this out to bid every five years?
We did put it out to bid. The last time that we went through, Nathan was actually the city manager at the time, and him and I had interviews with two other companies. I don't remember who those were right off the top of my head, but because of the price difference between the two of them, it was going to cost tremendously more for them to bring their staff from the Denver area down in order to complete our audit, so there was, I want to say close to a twenty thousand dollar, don't mark my word on that, but difference in price, so that's why we stayed with...
In addition to that, I'm not sure if it was as formal as a process of what you and Nathan did, but I know when we received information from council members that there might be a lot of interest out there. I know we also, for this, the one before, contacted and, and received additional quotes, and some of the ones that had shown interest didn't even give us a submission, so we even interrupted that five-year a little bit to make sure that if there was some competition that wasn't there before, we were taking that into consideration.
Counsel, I, I appreciate the concern. Councilor Grego, I, I know that, you know, spending another fifteen hundred dollars or so is probably an issue we all are concerned about, but the engagement letter to Wall Smith and Bateman has been passed with the amount not to exceed forty-nine-five, so why don't we go ahead and, and move on to Public Works, first reading on ordinance three dash twenty-fifteen, amending off-street parking requirements for eating and drinking establishment use and other auditoriums, meeting room use. Thank you, Pat.
Good evening, counsel. Tonight, we're asking that you consider an amendment to our code of ordinances, and in doing so, reduce the required off-street parking for two use groups in our zoning code. Recently, while reviewing two potential economic development projects, the subject of off-street parking requirements have been a hot topic of conversation between staff and potential developers. The result of those discussions has been a review of our current requirements and how they compare to other cities in the region, and recommendations and model ordinances of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. While our ordinances seem to be well in line in most areas, the review has indicated quite a discrepancy between our requirements and those of other cities in two different use groups we're asking to amend: eating and drinking establishments and auditoriums and meeting rooms. You can see on the chart on your screen how our requirements compare to other cities using these two, these two specific projects as a model. For the restaurant, our requirement was ninety-five or eighty-one, depending on how you interpret our regulation. Typically, the one per two seats or one per sixty feet is interpreted as whichever is greater. Other cities ranged anywhere from, we had sixty-three's all the way down to a twenty-five, fifty-five, forty-eight. You can see how, how our ordinance compares to those cities. And the other auditoriums and meeting rooms, that gets a, a bit more gymnastic when you try to determine parking requirements, because there's so many different ways to look at that use group, which is, which is essentially an event center. Depending on the final design of the building and whether it has fixed seating, how many seats are in it, whether it's an open floor plan with no fixed seating, it just, there's such a wide variation of how that can be interpreted, so what we did was, was, we went to two where we can look at, look at fixed seatings and an open floor plan. Our requirement right now is four hundred and seventy-eight to five hundred for something like the motorway building, after the ordinance change that we're recommending. Depending on seating and floor plan and available public space, things like that, the requirements could be anywhere from two hundred to about three hundred and eighteen at a max, so that compares to the other numbers you see, you know.
Excuse me, Pat. We did, we're trying to break our neck over here to look at the, that chart you have, because we don't have that in front of us here. Was that supposed to come in on our, on our, on our...
I was, I'm sorry. I assumed it was on your screen as well.
Oh, no, it's not. I've been trying to get it on there, but it's not.
Jim, we're obviously having a problem trying to get this in front of us.
I'm not, I'm not driving that part of the presentation, so I can't help.
Well, I was trying, I was trying to look over this way. Mr. V. Hill, I have front-row seats there.
You got it now?
Where is it at?
There you go. Thank you, Jim. Whatever you did, it worked.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem.
Well, he was talking about this, and I couldn't, I didn't understand what he said. Thank you, Pat.
Sure. As you can see, this reduction in required parking spaces will result in a change from ninety-nine to fifty-four required spaces for one of the projects reviewed, and a change from a potential requirement of nearly five hundred to two to three hundred for the other, depending on final design considerations. Both of these changes will align us better with cities in the region and will place us near the more conservative end of the ninety-five percent statistical confidence interval published by the Institute of Traffic Engineers. And I would like to stress that although this request is somewhat time-sensitive and the result of discussions with specific developers, it is not intended in any way to benefit individual businesses. Its intent is to benefit entire use groups that seem to have been overlooked in our planning process, and it will better position the city for attraction of new business and employment opportunities for our residents.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone have any questions or comments for Pat? Thank you, Pat. Appreciate the information. Counsel, this is a first reading. If you have any questions or comments, not only entertain a motion. Your wishes, counsel.
I motion we approve ordinance number three, twenty-fifteen, and ordinance amending chapter twenty-one, section twenty-one through one-seventy-one of the Code of Ordinances of Alamosa, Colorado, reducing certain off-street parking requirements. First reading. And set it for a public hearing on February eighteen. Thank you.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on ordinance number three, twenty-fifteen? Start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried anonymously.
Thank you. Next up, we have city manager legal, a public hearing on ordinance number two, twenty-fifteen, and ordinance amending article three of chapter fourteen of the Alamosa Code of Ordinances, sections fourteen dash fifty-one through fourteen dash fifty-five, to make the laws governing weeds, vegetation, trash, and rubbish applicable to all properties, not just developed properties, to aid requirements concerning maintenance of trees and shrubbery interfering with vehicle and pedestrian traffic, and to streamline the citation and appeals process. Is this Eric, or is this Heather? Thank you, Heather.
And as you quickly covered, that's essentially the, the meat of what this ordinance does. It is to take away some of the language that was somewhat confusing in regards to the undeveloped laws. Essentially, if someone owns property within the city limits, they will be responsible for it not becoming a nuisance. We tied our definition of noxious weed to that of the state of Colorado designated weed list. There are three different lists. We've tied it to list A, and then our Parks and Recreation Director would have the authority to add from list B and list C. In streamlining this, we changed the appeal process rather than it coming before city council. It would come before the city manager. Since we plan to become more aggressive in the more egregious cases of these nuisances, we decided to add an additional safety net appeal process that prior to abating the situation, the property owner would have a timeframe to make that appeal to the city manager as well. That way, we do not have a situation where we've cut the, the shrubs, the weeds, and they didn't have a chance to appeal that it, that it was a nuisance prior to that happening. Then, the last aspect is to expand what the current responsibility is for maintenance of the trees in the right of way. Currently, the property owners were responsible if the trees were diseased or creating a hazard because of that disease or, or being dead. We've expanded that to include also if the branches are preventing line of sight for the flow of traffic, or if they're hanging at a distance that can impede walkers or cars, so we have expanded that requirement. And with that, I can answer questions or listen as you open it for the public hearing.
Thank you, Heather. Are there any questions or comments before I open the public hearing? If not, I will open the public hearing on ordinance number two, twenty-fifteen. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against this ordinance? Please approach the podium. Identify yourself and your address, please, for the record. Thank you, Charlie.
Good evening, council, citizens, and staff. I'm Marilyn Loser. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Alamosa Tree Board. I live at five oh seven Pike's Peak, and I am so excited about these changes. I have been on the tree board for six years now, and when I first approached council about some of these ideas, it wasn't just no, it was hell no, and I'm very happy, I will say, that at our meeting on portion fourteen fifty-four C, that's the newly, new part of this, all the ones that apply to trees, we're very excited about. So, that's the overhang and the sitting out on the sidewalks, and I know as some of the other people I see walk around town, this has been an issue with me for years, and I just think that's very important for us, and I hope that this can happen, and I hope it can be taken care of, because I also noticed that with some of the things that are supposed to be taken care of, again, a walker, that we've had not a lot of snow this year, but when we have, no one's taken care of removing it a lot, and it's dangerous, and I'm not a young chick anymore, so I am concerned about that. Anyhow, I'm just going on to say, so, on fourteen fifty-four C, parts one, two, and three, we're certainly four, coming up at the tree board meeting, we just had a concern about what seemed a little vague about part four, that says, become overgrown and unkempt to be a nuisance to a neighbor, to neighboring property owners. Many of us are trying to have in those what we sometimes call health strips between sidewalks and the street. There's that three or four feet. A number of people are trying to put in xeriscate plantings, and that will not have to be watered a lot, and they're concerned that someone will come and give them a ticket to say, you can't have that. I also want to say with this, I know when I had a great talk with Pat recently about what he wants to on Victoria, Victoria Street, if I'm correct, to have some areas where water is collected, and again, have some xeriscate plants between the sidewalk and the street, that we'd like to make sure that these that aren't noxious weeds and horrible things would not be cited, because there's just a concern about how that seems vague. So, for example, one tree board member said at his house, he lives near the river, that they have a lot of what I have another adjective for, but is dreaded white top, and he's trying to put a lot of grass in there that grows higher than eight inches to drum out that white top, and so just that concern that this would be looked at. So, I'm not, so someone else at the tree board said, well, wouldn't that be considered ornamental, and we thought, whoa, we're just a little concerned who's making that distinction. So, it's not that we're against it, but just a concern that someone wouldn't come along and someone who's really trying to support some xeriscaping there, it wouldn't be condemned as a weed and pulled out. So, but I will backtrack. My main concern from the tree board is that we are so for this additions, and I will just add personally about the other parts that you've made a better process about what's to be done about weeds, because it always seems so vague that if anyone calls me, because I'm on the tree board, that I thought, um, so I appreciate this, and so I'm a little vague on just that last thing. I really applaud this, and it came out of the blue to us. I didn't see this till the other day. I would have worn green, had I known, for the tree board, but anyhow, I just appreciate this and appreciate the council and citizens and staff, so. Does my fiance have any questions for me, but that's my statement.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Do we have questions for Marilyn? Thank you so much, Marilyn.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Is there anyone else here to speak? Mr. Brink? Mr. Brink? Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you, counsel. My name's Ron Brink. As I've said before, I live in rural Colorado. I think this is very good to do. Things got extremely out of hand last summer, and I, if I hadn't have been so busy, I would have been here bringing it to attention, but I was taking care of my own weeds and putting up hay and doing the ranch thing, so it was a busy time, but I saw things and I just thought, man, something's got to be done. Well, it was, but it was actually too late, and I think the lady before me just said, you know, that it was vague. We need to get it, get that taken care of. Abatement that Heather alluded to, I think, needs to have a definite timeline, you know, if you have, if somebody's going to do it, otherwise, they drag their feet and it just goes for a long, long time. Noxious weeds are the big thing, and I hate to say this, but towns and cities are one of the largest, yeah, largest amount of noxious weeds, because people, they, lots of noxious weeds have real purty flowers, and that's what happens on that. Also, the diseased trees, you know, I think that's just something that the, the staff has to kind of watch for and bring it to the attention, because... to kind of watch for and bring it to the attention, because some homeowners don't know. They don't know what's happening. So, this is very good. Glad to see you working on it, and this is the right time, rather than in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brink. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. McCann, for being here.
Thank you for having me. My joke on that is, it's also nice being had, but I won't say that to the mayor. My name's Dan McCann, eighteen oh nine Sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. The most dangerous thing we do on a regular basis is to drive a car. Coming into an intersection with bushes and trees, close to the intersection can cause drivers to start sticking the nose of their vehicle out where they are in danger. I have three Corvettes. Have you ever seen a plastic all over the road when a Corvette's in an accident? It's not a pleasant sight. I want to also remind people, when you come to an intersection with a one-way, look both ways. People make mistakes, they don't see the signs, you're tired. When there's one ways, you look both ways. Also, especially if you're a pedestrian, you're surrounded by skin, they're surrounded by metal. I bet on the car, not you.
Thank you, Mr. McCann. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against ordinance number two, 2015? Seeing none, I will close it, close the public hearing and bring it back to Council for a decision. Counselor Vahill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment. Again, I'd like to reiterate my words from last meeting. A big thank you to staff and Pat for the work on this, and I'm really, really pleased, like Marilyn said, with the, with the new wording on trees, and how we can keep people safe as they walk and drive throughout our community. Thank you.
Counselor Grealio?
Just a couple of comments also. I just want to thank the City Manager also for making sure that this ordinance is across the board. Everybody gets, you know, and it's not for certain people only. It covers everybody and makes sure, if you're a big corporation or a small yard owner, this thing applies to you. That, and a comment from my, from my neighbor Marilyn, years back, they used to chop these trees up pretty bad, and I think that's what councils back there were kind of scared of, putting something together where you go out there and start cutting trees down. Because if you drove around years back, people just used to, nice trees, they used to chop them all up, you know, and maybe that's something, a class that maybe you might offer, how to trim trees and stuff. So, thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, staff, for the hard work that they put into this ordinance. I think it's a really good ordinance. I don't know if it's perfect, but it's a really good ordinance, and there's room for changes. The thing I like about this, like Marilyn said, was some things that aren't so clear, little examples. We do have that appeals process that gives the citizens the chance to come and chat about it, and so, I don't think we're going to be hard line on that, if there's reasons why, you know, the zero scape. I really don't think we're going to be taking people's zero scape plants out, especially if they come in and talk to our City Manager. I think we have that, and that's why I like this ordinance, is because we have that flexibility. I would also like to thank Heinz and his staff. He has been in the process, I think he's already done, of getting some of his staff certified to spray weeds, pesticide stuff out on the ranch and in those areas. And so, the city has made steps to bring ourselves up to that position, too, to address Mr. Brink's. We are one of the culprits, and we are working very hard to get that handled. Thanks for the comments.
Thank you. I have one question of staff. Who will be responsible for identifying diseased trees, and how will they be marked?
Essentially, I think there's two processes. Obviously, as we have our, Chief's going to kill me, I'm going to call him the wrong name, our nuisance officers out there, they'll be trained as far as what to look for, but they're obviously looking for a lot of different items, so they may not catch everything. The other way of enforcement is, when you get complaints, or if we get questions, we can always follow up on that. Sometimes, the eyes of the community are just as good to bring our attention to something, and that's when we can look, we can bring in the experts to see if it is a diseased tree, and offer some guidance to the property owner at that point in time.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Stefano?
I had my first meeting on the Tree Board today, and I had a question. I've driven down Third Street, and I think it's Alamos Avenue, about one of those streets, has overhanging trees. As you're going north, if you look west towards the college, you can't see. And my question was, who is responsible for this? Is the city responsible to trim those, or is it the owner?
Currently, as the ordinance stands right now, the city would be responsible for trimming the trees unless the tree is diseased. If the tree was diseased, then the property owner would need to take care of the situation. The changes that we are proposing in this ordinance would extend that responsibility from just the diseased maintenance to maintaining the limbs as well. So, if approved tonight, that would make it the property owner's responsibility.
Thank you. Counselor Coleman?
Yeah, I just have a comment. And I feel really good about this ordinance, because I believe that it's going to, over time, enhance the overall appearance of our city, in which when people pass through or people come to visit, it shows that we take pride in ownership in our community. Therefore, more people would want to move to our community. So, I would like to let everyone know that I appreciate the efforts that you put into this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. I have a motion and a second on the floor, I believe, so we can start, or unless there's any, no motions yet?
No motions.
Oh, okay. Oh, entertain a motion, then.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we pass ordinance number two, 2015, and ordinance amending Article Three of Chapter fourteen of the Alamosa Code of Ordinances, Section fourteen through fifty-one, through fourteen, through fifty-five, to make the laws governing weeds, vegetation, trash, and rubbish applicable to all properties, not just developed properties, to add requirements concerning maintenance of trees and shrubbery interfering with vehicle and pedestrian traffic, and to streamline the citation and appeals process.
I will second. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on ordinance number two, 2015? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Council. Chief Hokes, I see you back there with a guest. Obviously, before we go on to committee reports, would you like to introduce that gentleman to us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually extended an invitation to the new Chief of Police of Adam State University to come in and see the Council meetings, and he obviously chose to show up, and he's expressed the interest in getting to know the city and the operations of the city. So, I'll let him introduce himself to you and a little bit about himself.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, member of Council, City Manager, citizens. I want to first thank everyone in the community for being so welcoming. When I had this opportunity to interview this position, the big draw for this community was not only the grandeur and the beauty of the community, but the welcoming nature of the actual citizens, the people that I'm actually working with now. So, me and my family are very grateful for the hospitality and the welcome. I'd like to also take credit for the warm weather you've had. I brought that from Florida with me. Everyone was concerned about me melting or freezing here, so, for the record, I'm from the Northeast, and I've lived a good portion of my life in the snow. So, thank you for the opportunity to be part of your community. Appreciate it.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Thanks for bringing the heat, Chief. Appreciate that.
Anytime.
Counselor Vahill?
Chief, thank you for serving our community, and I'd like to offer my condolences to you and your, your crew on the passing of Alyssa Riggs.
Thank you for that. We're going to be attending the funeral on Saturday.
Welcome, and I'll look forward to seeing you on campus. I generally walk the campus periodically.
Me, too.
Thank, welcome to Alamosa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And so, with that, we'll move on to committee reports. Who has a committee report? Counselor Vahill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the School Board, Corey Notstein, who I'm all you, who I know you all know, won the Counsel of the Year Award, was in Washington, DC the past week, and he described his week in DC and his conversations with the, with Michelle Obama. Okay, and then, the new district website will be fully accessible next week. Two calendars are currently being developed, and the staff from the school district will vote on them soon for next year's school year, that calendar. And the Assistant Superintendent Kerry Zimmerman talked about the upcoming CMAS testing. This is the state mandated testing for science and social studies testing for grades fourth, seventh, eighth, and twelfth grade. Thank you.
Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, the Alamosa Library Board met last week. The Alamosa Public Library continues to set new records for the 2014 year. Some of those records are most checkouts and renewals in a single month, most checkouts and renewals in a single year, highest adult circulation in a single month, highest adult circulation in a single year, highest children's circulation in a single month, highest children's circulation in a single year, most patron visits in a single month, and most in a single year. So, we continue to set new records continually through the year. Some of the single daily records were most patrons of nine hundred and seventy-eight people in one, one day, and the most PC users, four hundred and thirty-four users in a single day. Some of the community involvement, we had a movie night, the Lego Movie was shown for children, and we also had planes, fire, and rescue. The library always has a movie for the children, so be sure and check that out. I urge you to attend. Three genealogy classes were given in November by Martha Kelly, genealogy specialist from the local family history center, and we had a number of attendance for that program. The Friends of the Library donated five thousand dollars to the library, which was put to use in lighting of the display case. You might check that out in the library, it looks very nice. And the Friends of the Library organized the sixth annual literary magazine reception, where the sixth edition of Messages from Hidden Lake was presented. Fifty-one authors, authors and guests participated in, including readings from their published works. So, thank you.
Counselor Coleman?
Okay, my report is from the San Luis Valley Development Resource Group. This past year, businesses and individuals contributed over one point four million dollars in cash and in kind to different projects and organizations in the San Luis Valley. And in turn, those businesses and individuals received a twenty-five percent tax credit towards their 2014 Colorado income taxes, which collectively totaled over three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. I just briefly want to go over some of the types of businesses that can qualify for the different available enterprise zone tax credits. They have the investment tax credit, the job training tax credit, the new business facility job credit, the new business facility agricultural processing job credit, the new business facility health insurance credit, and they also have an enhanced rural enterprise zone credit. So, I just wanted to let people and organizations and businesses in the community know what type of tax credits are available here throughout the San Luis Valley. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman, and I also, is anyone else? I also attended the Council of Governments. Pretty much, the same information was given to us. They talked about some of the programs, San Luis Valley Business Loan Fund, the San Luis Valley Enterprise Zone, talked about comprehensive economic development strategy, contribution tax credit, demographic data and research. Ruth, I'm sure you'd be interested in this, and workforce development, tourism, transportation planning. I've got a couple of copies, I will place them in the reading file, but the programs, you know, are just really benefiting. And of course, Counselor Coleman talked about some of the investments and qualifying investments and a lot of the other tax credits that, that have happened in 2014. So, I will place this in the reading file as well. Anyone wishing to look at it, including staff, please feel free to do that. I'm sure you already have that information anyway. But anyone else with a committee report? Then we'll move on to staff announcements. Heather?
To back up slightly to the nuisance ordinance, I did want to compliment the team of employees that actually came together. It was cross-departmental, which is, I think, what's going to enable it to be successful. I know Public Works was there in regards to the role that they will play in the abatement process. Police were involved in regards to the citation, identifying the nuisances enforcement. And then Eric did some research as well on legalities and what other cities are doing, and making sure that we wrote a very clean ordinance. We also talked afterwards, we didn't have Heinz at the table at the first meeting, but we did talk with Parks and Rec in regards to the city being the biggest offender at times, and making sure that we're doing what we can to meet our own ordinances in this as well. So, it really was a team effort to pull this together, and it's something, it's a process that crosses multiple departments. So, staff did a great job on that. Last Wednesday, Pat and I met with Jamie and Jeff Witter to discuss the motorway. They are engaging professionals to move that project forward as an event center. It has the potential to be very exciting for the community. Given some of the constraints of the location, we wanted to make sure that we were on the same page in regards to what would be required for a certificate of occupancy. There's essentially two items. One is meeting the parking requirements, and we wanted to make sure they understood what those were, even if they changed, what they still are, and if they're not able to meet them, what their options are. And then the other item is the structural engineer reviewing the building. We were pretty clear that those items would need to be addressed before even another temporary occupancy would be given, and that hopefully, we can work very closely, that their professionals were here to answer any questions throughout the whole process. So, we hope them, wish them the best of luck, and hope that that project's very successful and can produce the results that, that they're anticipating. We saw several officers recognized today, either as new officers and through the promotion process. These past couple weeks have also been busy from a response perspective, and I think their training and skills have really shown as far as how they've responded to some of these incidents that have been high stress and requires them to really think through what consequences are and how much force to use. So, they've really proven their training, and they've also proven the partnerships that they have with, within our community, when we need to respond to our partners and offer our assistance, and then when we have partners offering their assistance in a response. So, these last few weeks have been very positive in the performance there. I wanted to let Council know that the February utility bills will have a stuffer with them that will explain the online bill pay. So, that is coming. In addition to paying the bill, customers would also be able to look at what their usage is and other items related to their account. So, we're excited to get that up and rolling and offer that convenience. The pink elephant, I'm sure, is raising some questions. Randy is finishing that up. He hopes to have the one last item for C dot done, and there's one other item in relation to the asbestos that he needs to wrap up. But he's hoping maybe next week or the beginning of the week after. So, it is coming to fruition. It is going to get knocked down, and it will get completed. Lastly, I think several Council members were contacted about a light on the Excel Tower that was added. We have made some progress and have good news to report, that Excel realizes that maybe that light should not have been placed, and it's not needed for any requirements with FAA or anything like that. So, they will be turning it off. They need to go through their process to do that, but at some point, it should be getting turned off. So, we have been successful with those discussions. And I think Heinz has information related to the smashing success of the last weekend.
Evening, councilors. Just a little update on the Ice Fest for this past weekend. It went extremely well, we thought, anyway. Just a couple of things. You know, we had a, a meet and greet with Elson Anna that was sponsored by the Alamosas Quanis Club. Had over 350 kids go through the line, so that was just outstanding. Of that, we had 68 kids participate in the costume contest, and compared to last year, there was 12. So it was a huge increase in that area. The scavenger hunt had 63 complete entries, and the staff gave away 200 entries to interested folk. We had nine businesses enter into the, the Fall Snowman Contest, and the Purple Pig won that contest this year. On the race, last Wednesday, you know, before the race, we had like 115 registered, and by Saturday morning, we had over 200 registered for that race on the Rio. And we had over 150 people complete, because it was two laps. A lot of people just did the one lap, and that was it, but we had over 150 complete the race. And the preliminary results are on the rec's The bonfire started out slow Saturday night, but finally built up, and we, we estimated that we had over 200 people there enjoying that event. From a sponsorship-wise, we had 21 local businesses help sponsor the Ice Fest in the Rio Frio. They contributed over $5,500 toward the event. And from, also, we got another $6,000 in grants. Had $2,500 from the local market district that went to the Ice Fest itself, another $2,500 that went to the Rio Frio for the race, and then $1,000 from Walmart. So we had, in total, we had about 37 entities sponsor the event or contributed in kind to make the Ice Fest Rio Frio what it was. And from comments from people, we had a lot of people downtown on Saturday, which is the whole point of this.
Mayor, I, I was going to make some comments on council comment about this. If I can make them now.
You go right ahead, Counselor Gray.
I, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to participate in this, in the, in the judging and stuff. Greg and myself, we went and we judged the, the snowmen. Like you said, there was nine snowmen out there, and we got a little participation from other people, and finally, they're the ones that chose the, the Purple Pig. It wasn't, it was, there was no bribing in that, so. But we, we had a good, what I wanted to say is, boy, I, I saw a team come together in, in the chamber, the marketing district, your people, Andy Rice, boy, he did a great job, and, and even Jeff Owlesley with this, with the running and stuff. And the weather was nasty and cold, and there was a lot of people out there on Saturday. I was just so amazed that, that people stuck around. And even at the bonfire, you know, the people showed up and, and, and they really, they participated. And even to kick this off, the deal that they had over at St. Ives for the, for the business people, that was a, a big success. So altogether, you know, we need to thank all these people and Heinz for what they, they really, a lot of businesses got business, too. You know, they were in and out because the weather was nasty, so they were going in and out, staying warm, and I think they even bought stuff, so. I was going to mention that at council comment, so now, good. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, I'd like to thank Heinz and Andy Rice. They did an incredible job. I'll have to disagree with Charlie. I thought the weather was perfect. It was, it was not too warm. It's about 33, 34 in the afternoon, and it wasn't the bitter cold we've had some years. So I'll disagree with Charlie on that. It was a pleasure to walk around and see all the snowmen and characters of Frozen, and everyone enjoyed the ice carving. It was, I think, a tremendous success. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And I would like to also, this time, thank, you know, the staff of both at Parks, Rec, and Public Works, because they did a lot to help make sure that the Rio Frio came up with a hitch, without a hitch, without having any kind of incident. We checked that ice a lot of times and readjusted with Jeff Owlesley's help, readjusted the course to make it safe, and it turned out to be really, really good. Little slushing spots, but otherwise it was pretty good. And just to continue on, also, we just let out an RFP for the architectural design for the new Park Cemetery office, and that's what we'll be coming doing at the end of the month. And because of the warm weather, unfortunately, we've had to close the ice rink for the foreseeable future. It's just, just unable to keep good ice on there. Soft ice is just as bad as having no ice at all. And this has probably been a record less than four-week season right now. So, and the way it looks in the weather, it's going to be 50s and for the next, for next few days, so it's just going to wipe out the ice.
Thank you, Heinz. Is there anyone else? Well, then, we'll move on to council comment. Does anyone have a comment? I, I, I will make a comment. Mr. Brink, you know, when it comes to citizen comment at the beginning of our meeting, that is a courtesy to folks that want to come in and visit with us about small subjects. Generally, subjects that are, for consideration, are, we have what's known as a public hearing, and you can take as much time as you want there to visit about that. But that is offered as a courtesy, and a three-minute time limit is something that we've instituted in order to keep some of the people from speaking a whole lot longer about an issue that, you know, may have already been covered or that kind of thing. So, no offense to you or any of the pub, public, but that, that's why we do that. And anyway, that's my council comment for that. Anyone else have a council comment? Counselor Coleman?
Just one comment about the ice rink. Four weeks because of the weather, you know, that's unfortunate. I think in the near future, we're going to have discussions about things that we can do as council to help the people who do participate in the ice rink, so that in the future, if we have a heat wave come through here from Florida, from Chief, someone like that, these kids can still participate in those outdoors activities. I think it's very vital that we continue to look for ways to enhance activities for kids and the youth here in our community. So, Heinz, thanks for sharing and letting me know that we only had four weeks. I went out there a couple of times to go ice skating, and it was too hot, you know, because of the, the weather was too warm. So thank you for bringing that to our attention, so we could look further into that in the future.
Mayor, if I can just add on?
Yes?
I had mentioned to council that we had formed a team to take a look at the ice rink. Where we are in that process is, we met a few days ago, and then we have a meeting on Monday as well. It's going to then go to the recreation board. Depending on the input from the recreation board, then we will have the work session that's currently scheduled for council for your consideration of those items. So that's where we are in the process of, of that project.
Thank you, Heather. I know that Heinz sent out a communique about the next rec board meeting. I believe many council members will be at a retreat, or there's a, there's a conflict there somewhere. So I, I don't know, Heinz, when you're going to meet, but please let us know when, when you plan to meet, or have you decided on a date?
We will be rescheduling. We will not have a quorum for that, so we will need to reschedule the recreation board. So hopefully, we can still get it within this month when we can have a quorum for attendance. Speaking of upcoming meetings as well, some of us, including you, I believe, is doing the CML Legislative Workshop next week, and we do have the mini-retreat February 21st. So there are some other items coming up.
Thank you, Heather. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my comment is also on the, the timer. I, I agree with Mr. Brink. I think it's a bit intimidating for, for citizens to come up here and speak with big numbers flashing in their face. So I would ask council, maybe we can discuss a new option to time folks. And I think it might be an issue of, of holding people accountable with the time limit, and not having to flash it in front of their face. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Well, any other council comment? If not, we have the need for an executive session. I will entertain a motion for executive session.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make that motion that we go into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, in parentheses four, in parentheses A, to discuss acquisition of property interested, interested related to the Pink Elephant Project, and to pursue to CRS 24-6-402, in parentheses four, in parentheses E, to determine position and instruct negotiators related to such acquisition.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the executive session? Seeing none, start voting, please. Holly?
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. After our executive session, there will be no further business discussed. We will go back into regular session and during the meeting. Thank you.